Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for March 15, 2022. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk again to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny, Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Rinkie?
President.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is under Building and Zoning, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item under our committee tonight under Building and Zoning, and that's the cannabis dispensary site plan for the town center, but I think some things have changed, so I'll turn it over to Roberta Grill.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. About an hour ago, staff was notified that the petitioner has withdrawn their request. However, staff would still like to seek your input regarding several questions that we had outlined in our staff report. If I could go over those with you. This is in regards to a proposed medical or adult-use cannabis dispensary. And should medical and adult-use cannabis dispensaries be located within commercial zoning districts and PD districts where commercial uses are allowed? If so, which zoning districts, B1, the B2, B3, B4, or the PD district where commercial uses are allowed? And if you choose to allow, in some or all of the districts, should these uses be permitted by right, or should they be special uses? And finally, should the thousand-foot distance requirement from either a school, daycare center, a daycare home, or an area zoned for residential uses be amended or removed to match the state regulations? So that's what we're seeking your input on tonight.
So you're looking for a little input from staff?
Yes.
Probably the simplest one to address would be the thousand-foot distance requirement from schools. We currently have something similar to that in our ordinances zoning, and it pertains to, I can't remember, but we have something similar?
Liquor?
Huh?
Liquor?
Yeah, that's what.
A hundred feet.
It was a hundred feet. All right, well, let me ask that. If this were to be located in the town center here, you know, behind us, would that be a thousand, would that meet the requirement of a thousand feet? It wouldn't. All right.
That's why all these questions are coming up from staff.
Now, how do we end up with a thousand feet, then?
That was the original.
That's our current regulations.
That's our current, okay. And that was also in the state statute previously.
And the state statute replaced that with no requirement, restrictions?
No, no requirements currently by the state.
So maybe in layman's terms, I think what staff is looking for is, where do we want these things if we want them at all, and is there going to be restrictions as to proximity of any other businesses? That's basically what they're looking for.
I don't mind keeping or making this a special use in any of the districts, because I think some of the districts, their uses kind of overlap a little bit. So I think I'm okay as long as it's a special use. And as far as a thousand feet, I think some of these places are cleaner than some of the liquor stores, and they're very well-kept. So, and I, I mean, you go past the liquor store, and you got signs for beer, flashing lights, and all this other stuff, and some of these places are very discreet. So I'm okay, you know, eliminating the thousand feet, because the state doesn't require that anymore, correct?
That's correct.
I agree with trustee Hopkins. I would say the same as the liquor stores currently, treating it the same.
I am, I am in favor of loosening some of the restrictions. I am not in favor of the town center. I did drive by the Zen Leaf in St. Charles. Roberta was kind enough to give us a list also of some of the surrounding towns, and all of them say that they do not have them in their town center, in their downtown. St. Charles doesn't. This facility is out on Main Street, kind of right, it's where in the strip, right in front of the strip mall where TJ Maxx is, okay? So it's out of the downtown area, so it's out of that congested area. They have their own standalone building. They have their own, their own parking area, plus they have the mall area there. I know someone who works at the TJ Maxx, and she says it can get, it can get pretty crowded there. We have more brewing coming in. We still have an 104-unit apartment complex going up. We have apartments on top of it, okay? I just, I don't see that as the place. But I am, I would be open to looking at other places in town, other than all the way out in Brewster or Heron.
If we did make it a special use, could we carve out a certain area, the downtown area, make our own boundaries?
Well, you have a downtown overlay district, so you don't have to allow it in that. You could make it a special use in the other commercial districts if you chose to do that.
So we can make it a prohibited use in our, in our downtown overlay?
Yes.
But make it a special use in the other areas?
Yes, you can. And by making it a special use, which is an excellent idea, by the way, you know, we get to review all of that, or it goes before the committees for review, and then comes to the village board for final vote.
Yeah, and also it would go to our new formed commission, which they would have to do a public hearing also.
Correct.
So I mean, there would be several layers of transparency involved in this.
So I just want to point out one thing. So the town center is zoned planned development. That ordinance allows uses, or special uses, under B1 and B2, not just the downtown zoning designation.
Well, I just thought, we heard that.
Can we carve that out?
We could carve it out. I just thought I heard that.
If I use the language, I'll have to check with Brian on that.
We have to look at precisely how to do that, but yes, you could. But the B2, it also is a PUD. So they would need, if we're talking the town center, they would have to amend the PUD ordinance. As you may recall, that was a big part of the apartment process as well, not just rezoning, but also amending the Bartlett Town Center PUD. And we'd have to look at, when we approve, allow it perhaps on a B2 as a special use to exclude the PUD. You know, but there's another level of protection or restriction, if you will, when it's a PD and then also a PUD. They need, they would have to amend the underlying PUD.
So it sounds like everyone is kind of in agreement on the basic language of what we're looking for?
I have a concern, though, okay? You know, we're talking about, you know, not allowing it in the downtown area, and my concern is that, you know, I think in a certain way that the way the cards fell, okay, the way they played out, whoever was applying for this withdrew this evening, okay, if we don't expedite this, we could have somebody next week come in and want to put it in a similar location in downtown area.
Well, it's prohibited right now. This would have involved the text amendment, kind of a public hearing on the text.
Okay.
So apparently, they're not allowed.
Good.
And this particular partitioner at this particular location withdrew their petition.
Right.
So, yes, there's no urgency as far as that goes.
From a, from a strictly zoning perspective, it seems to me that these cannabis dispensaries are rather intense, like a McDonald's with, you know, like a drive-thru, really.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was going there.
Yeah.
And a lot of the zoning ordinances treat drive-throughs a little differently. They treat gas stations differently. But I think we get that same sort of intensity of use with a cannabis facility that we do with, with gas stations and drive-throughs and things of that nature. So whatever district we end up putting them in, it should recognize that. So maybe like a neighborhood district isn't quite right because the infrastructure isn't there. I was going to have a hard time with saying yes on this facility downtown because the traffic, the parking, it just, it was not going to work. But I think those are definitely things that we need to take into consideration in the, in the zoning district itself. And then, you know, I don't know if we have special zone, you know, conditions and the special use, but I'll leave it up to you, you folks, to kind of massage that. But that's, that's just my two cents, because it is, it's a crazy use. I mean, the people, you know, seem relatively polite, but it's a lot of people, and they're coming and going. And they have money.
So how do we handle it if there's like another successful business there, then? Just anything that can go in there? I'm just saying, like, it could be something else that has like lots of traffic, right, that's?
Well, right.
Yeah, so how do we?
Well, but doesn't the existing ordinance deal with that? I mean, we have existing special uses. We have, you know, we already treat drive-through windows differently.
Okay.
So this would just be focusing in on the, you know, like a carve-out. I hate to say, I hate to use the word carve-out, because that makes me, that makes me nervous. But we're just specifically talking about the cannabis facility.
And I think you're concurring with the majority here.
Right.
It's a special use. So drive-up is, and a gas station are also special uses, so.
Precisely.
Right, so I think we're.
Would a special use automatically eliminate the thousand-foot distance requirement?
No, that, that would have to be a text amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the thousand, but is our consensus that the thousand feet is too restrictive?
Yes.
Yeah?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I don't even know how many locations that actually would impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Bartlett.
If we have liquor stores within a hundred.
That's the area.
Is there additional stuff that you need as far as the specific zoning areas, or? I would just add that one of the things I've been talking to staff about, and I think it would be important to start considering is if this does come into Bartlett somewhere, that the funds we receive from this are earmarked for specifics, just like the gambling, the yogams, so specific purposes?
Sure.
Well, I know that.
It's found revenue. We should use it for something specific?
Yeah, I know that.
Sidewalks downtown, or?
We had talked about the infrastructure.
Sewer?
Sewer and water infrastructure.
Infrastructure?
We're going to have a great discussion about that, sewer and water.
Oh, that's exactly what.
Just put a smile on Dan's face.
We had, we had talked a little bit about that today, and we had talked about, you know, if we could earmark that for the infrastructure. And I'm on Dan all the time about the water main breakage. If we could earmark it for that, that would be something really.
You've got to go find a use, you know, come into town here.
You better be on the phone tonight, Dan.
Is there any other questions regarding cannabis tonight?
I support including it and going to special use.
Okay. Do you have what you need? That's all we have under building and planning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. We have two items on the first item is water sewer rate increase review. And water and sewer rates are reviewed during the budget process each year. Water rate increase of 4% is proposed to fund approved capital projects and projected 4.3% increase to DuPage Water Commission's rate. Sewer rates, sewer rate increases are also being proposed to pay debt service on the estimated $37 million IEP loan for the bittersweet WWTP project beginning in the fall of 2023, and for bonds issued in 2019 to fund the Cook County excess flow facility project. Sewer rates were last increased effective with the May 1, 2019 bills. Increases have been postponed the last two years due to the pandemic. Rate increases are planned over the next four years, and this is for discussion only. Todd, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you. That was a very good summary. Yeah, we talked about, we had this chart up when we did the budget review, and it was showing 5% increase, and the projected balances were above the maximum of our policy. This is a 4% increase that we're proposing. One of the things that was not around when we talked about the budget was the DuPage Water Commission increase that was, was, we just received after we put out the budget. Their proposed budget is, got a 4.3% increase in the, in their rate that they charge us. So taking that into account, that's, that's going to be an extra $250,000 rounding off up just a little bit. So that would, a 4% increase is $480,000. So right away, the DuPage Water Commission increase would, would take about half of that. So this chart does reflect the DuPage Water Commission increase. We've had some discussions. I know when we did the capital budget, we reduced, or we kept the water main replacement program down to 1.2 million, I think is the total, basically a million plus engineering fees. Originally, we had in there 1.7 million, 1.8 million. We brought that down a little bit just to keep the rates down. So if you're looking to do more infrastructure, this does not do as much infrastructure as we'd like to do, but the 4% takes into account about a million dollars a year in water main replacement, and then also the meter changeout program that is going to cost a million dollars a year. That would be a four-year program. And then, after that finished up, that might leave some more money as far as the main replacement program. But, so here with the 4% increase, it does, it does bring our fund balance down within our policies within, within two years. Are there any other questions? I do have a sample bill that talks about 4% increase. Would add about $2.82 a month to a bill that's 6,000 gallons.
Anyone else?
Cook County, right. I have a question. Why is Kane County so, why is there a percentage?
So. Yeah, on the Kane County, in regard to the sewer, there is no sewer rate increase. I'll move on to the sewer rate after, I just wanted to get past the water rate discussion first. They're kind of, we treat them separately. We have two separate funds. But the Kane County is, there's no sewer rate increase. Basically, when we get to the sewer rates, increases are due to the capital improvements. Basically, the, in DuPage County, it's the wastewater treatment plant, and then in Cook County, it's the excess flow project that we, that's still, you know, it's not settled, but we're still moving towards that direction. So is that what you mean by the Kane County?
We don't have any infrastructure improvement going on in Kane, basically.
Right, there's very little to Kane County, and it's relatively brand-new. So we haven't been in the, in the past, we have not accumulated funds and then, and then spent it. It's more, we wait for the project and then get funds for it.
Thank you.
Well, the, the rate increases are painful. I mean, and there's no, there's no sugar coating that. The rate increases are brutal when you look at the history. But we've come to a point in the life of the water and the sewer systems that we've got to do maintenance. We have to spend money on these capital projects. The regulations, you know, keep getting more stringent. Bittersweet had to be renovated. So we've kind of, we've reached a point where we have all these things, the age of the system, the regulatory changes, and that we just, we have to spend this kind of money and then increase these rates. It's brutal, though.
I do have, in your packet, my pages are a little. Wrong way, sorry. Yeah, so like you said, it is, it is painful to raise rates. So we have gone two years without raising rates. It was nice not to do that, but then, then you end up paying the price. And so we, you can see in the, on the water side, we raised quite a bit just for the Lake Michigan transition, and now we're proposing just to start a more consistent, regular rate increase of 4% for the next four years. So in that chart that I showed you, 25, 26, that would be an additional $1,920,000 roughly. I'm not sure what exactly it will be, but it'll be in that ballpark, and that would be to support those capital improvements.
Would there be any anticipation, once some of these projects are completed, these rates go down after those four years?
I would say no, because we talked about the water main replacement program at just a million dollars a year. We could easily do 2 million. We could do more than that. Dan had brought up that at the rate of 1 million, that's about a mile, we have about 200 miles of water mains. So.
Numbers are not in our favor.
Can we, can we get some kind of communication out to the village of why this, we need a campaign?
Well, it is, it is a big increase. We need to start regular increases. We've got other inflation. That's the big word now, is inflation, and costs do go up. And, but seeing, seeing the depreciation, that's an accounting term, but it means your, your assets are getting older, and they're going to need to be replaced.
What is the average household water usage in Bartlett? Family of four.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to gauge what 6,000 gallons is. I couldn't tell you what we use, so.
Yeah, a family of four is usually 6,000. That, that's what we throw out. The thing about saying 6,000 is, there's no two neighbors that use the same amount of water. And we talk to people about that every day. My neighbor's bill is this. How many times, you know, does your neighbor do laundry? How many, how long do they take a shower? How, how many times do they, how many, so, yeah, it's, it's different from one house to the next. It doesn't matter if your house is big or small. It can be different. Some people like to wash their car more. I, you know, I don't know. We, that's, I, I always say that's why we have the meter, and so we don't have to do that kind of thing.
Dan, with the meter changeout program that we're going to implement, there's, there's more statistics that a family could actually log into their computer and engage how much water usage they're using on any given day or time or week, or if there's a leak in their house, it'd be able to detect some of this. So it's possible after this program that a family could actually reduce some of their water usage by just being more efficient.
I would agree.
Okay.
That's the, the plan. When we get the meters changed out, every homeowner would be able to look at their bill, set up alerts where if there's a continuous run, that means like a toilet is stuck open or something like that, it'll send an alert that, hey, you might need to check something, something's running.
Yeah. So we're going to spend a million dollars a year over, what, four years?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
But ultimately, this could, for people that want to be more efficient, this could really help them save some money.
Right.
Okay, I'll move on.
Yeah, move on, please.
Move on to the, to the sewer rates, then. Try to rotate it again. There's not as, not as much room. As you can see in the water fund, we're starting with about $6 million in the fund. The sewer fund is at about $2 million. It's, of course, it doesn't have as much revenue coming in, so the fund balance is not as big. But we're still trying to do a million dollars a year in the sewer rehabilitation program. We are using COVID relief money to provide some relief or some subsidies as far as spending $500,000 next year, a million the following year, and a 500 the next to kind of temper the rates. But this is what the fund would look like with the capital improvement program if we had an additional $475,000 a year, each year for the next four years. Now, that would be about $88,500 from the Cook County and $386,000 for DuPage County. So Cook County is about 28% of the revenue. Right now, the 21, 22 revenue for Cook County, we're estimating about $1,750,000, and DuPage County, $4,480,000. So that just gives you a little idea of how much money is coming from, from where. So when we're raising the rates to pay for debt service, about $550,000 a year, it takes quite a bit to get up to there when you're starting with the revenue base of 1.7 million. So that's why the, the rates, we've raised, we've already raised the rates a couple of years going towards there. We've talked about how the rates are high compared to communities, other communities, we all have already built in some rates. So we're extending, I'm trying to extend that last of a three-year over the next four years, and we're doing that by using some of that recovery money to help stretch that out. The big thing that we're going for is the loan repayment for the wastewater treatment plant, and that is expected to start in the fall of 2023, and that's expected to be about $2 million a year. So we're trying to get the DuPage County rates up to there, at the same time, bring along Cook County rates to cover the, the debt service for the Devon Avenue project. Is there any specific questions? I can go back.
I think we're fine. Do we have any questions? Any questions?
Where's the good news?
Chris Burke was doubling. He was 100% rate increase for the Lake Michigan project.
Yeah.
And we ended up about 85%. So we're, yeah, we're, we're, and then we didn't raise it for two years, so we're quite a bit, I would say, lower than what he was predicting.
Good thing.
Got Chris Burke on the back, then.
If there are no more questions, that concludes everything we have on the water and the sewer rate increase review. And I don't have anything else on my, oh, I forgot the budget review. Mr. President, we have the, and, and board members, and we have the 2022, 2023 budget, proposed budget review for administration, public works, finance, and central services. And Todd, you're up again, pal.
Thank you. We're scrambling the order a little bit. We're going to have central services come first. We're starting with the most exciting, and we're, oh, wait a minute. We're starting with the most difficult to understand, and then we're, we'll end up with the grand finale of administration.
Sounds good.
So first off, we're going to start with central services. Chris is our IT coordinator. He's going to be talking about central services. The big thing, and central services is the capital outlay. So I've got it up on the screen, some of the equipment. So we, we collect money from each department that funds the central services fund. And so you see that in, when you see the central services transfer at the bottom, towards the end of each department line item, it comes into this fund, and that's, that's where this is, this comes from.
Good evening, Mayor, and trustees. Thanks for the opportunity to review this part of the budget with you. As Todd mentioned, the central services fund is basically a fund used to account for expenses that early that are really hard to assign to any individual department, including that is a lot of the IT services. But I mean, it covers everything from mosquito spraying to maintenance agreements to the printing of the barbers. So there's quite a bit in here. But I do... I am responsible for much of the capital outlays. So we'll go through these quickly. The first item is replacement of desktop and laptop computers. We replace a third at a time on a four-year cycle. So this is that third. Number two is the police squad computers. We're going to be doing a complete refresh. It's been nearly five years. And they need to be replaced. And we need to prepare for new software and solutions that are coming their way in the next couple of years. That's number two. Number three is actually a carryover that we budgeted for this year. But unfortunately, the software vendor doesn't have their software up to the point where we need it to be. So we put that off this year and we'll be doing it next year once their software is where it needs to be. Number four is a copy of your main office. The existing one's just gotten so slow and it causes more headaches for them and slows down their ability to provide services. Number five is replacement of a couple analog security cameras that we've had left over that we've been kind of limping. But we'd like to get... We've transitioned all the other cameras onto a digital system. And we'd like to get these two replaced. And item six was something we asked about last year and I'm asking again. This is a drone. One of the purposes would be primarily, the reason this came up, was for our GIS staff. We GPS every bit of utilities, whether it's water, sewer, unit name. We're GPSing it. And one of the things the drone would allow us to do is to more accurately and more efficiently GPS some of the utilities that are being placed in the ground. We'd be able to pick up some items such as where joints are actually located. You know, we can't really jump in the trench when they're doing this, but we could certainly fly a drone overhead. And it has the ability... We'd be able to pick out items on the pictures and know the exact GPS coordinates. And this could help Public Works staff when we have breaks or such to know whether they're not... They're working to fix a break near a joint or not and how that might impact the way they approached fixing that water main break. The other uses would be, you know, for Public Works to do inspections of... Hard to get to. For the PDS staff, some of the inspectors had mentioned how using a drone might be helpful for them when they're doing inspections of roofs or it would violate inspections when it might be hard to access some yards. Also promotional videos. You know, one of the things, and Trustee Danny might appreciate this, one of the things, you know, the GIS staff did a nice golf interactive kind of map that had some hints from the golf staff. We kind of also thought that it'd be nice to be able to do kind of include video which would kind of simulate a golf ball flying down the...
I think that's an excellent idea.
So those are some of the uses we see for that item.
Not Ray's shot. You don't need a drone to see how far his goes.
You left yourself open for that. Wait a second.
So if anyone has any questions about any of those items, I'm happy to answer.
How often would this thing get used?
Well, quite often. Whenever we're replacing, you know, utilities such as water mains or sewer or anything like that, we would certainly use it for that. We might also use it for, you know, a lot of times, PDS is coming before you with site.
Is there any reason why we can't use the police department's drone?
Yes, there is. They can only use it for public safety.
That's because it was paid for by funds that have paid for it, yeah.
And as you know, the police department has other more restrictive uses. They have... The drone use for the police department is much more regulated.
So the argument of a computer no longer being covered under warranty, what is the life expectancy of the computers in both categories?
Sure, sure. We replace the desktops every four years. We used to actually be on a three-year cycle during 2008. In the downturn in the economy, we were asked if we could extend it further. And we did. We extended it to four. Four years seems to be an acceptable range for us. Again, it's, you know, every single employee, at least within Village Hall employees, really depend upon a computer to do their jobs.
Are they operating at their optimal efficiency right now? I'm asking because I... Four years, is it five years? Can they last six? I was looking at...
Sure, no, it's a good question. And it's a fair question. Again, could they last longer? Certainly. We do run into issues like in the police department, you know, where we ordered them... You know, we ordered them with specs we think are going to be adequate for the time. It turns out now the hard drives for the police department squad laptops are inadequate. We often run into issues where we're filling up disk space on those. But again, you know, any time a computer goes down for a while, you potentially have an employee who's now cannot accomplish their jobs. So I know it seems like, you know, we should be able to stretch these out or why can't we just use them until they stop working? But the idea is that, you know, your biggest expense is employees. But you're... You know, if those employees can't do work, then not only are you... You're wasting more money by not having that employee work than you are by providing them the equipment they need to work efficiently.
What's the rotation? It's a third of...
So, yeah, like I said, we had been on a three-year cycle. So when we decided to go to a four-year cycle, since they'd already been replaced every three years. Now, so we go a third, a third, a third, and we skip a year. And then it's a third, a third, a third. So we're still only replacing a third every four years. So we are following a four-year cycle. And again, this, you know, it's common... It's considered best practice to have a regular schedule for replacing your equipment rather than just running them to the ground.
Do you get any value for them?
Yeah, I mean, we do auction them off. And we do get some value. I mean, it's usually like 100 bucks, 120. But we do...
You think you would get more value trading them in after four years versus six, seven, or eight?
You know, if you're doing a lease kind of thing, you end up paying as much with a lease than you do. So it's... And plus, you know, again, we're... Our old finance director just didn't think leasing was a good idea. You're basically... This is why we have an equipment replacement fund where we say, you know, we expect this life to be this much... Excuse me. And so we set aside money each year. So when it comes time for replacement, the money's already there. It's sitting in the fund, ready to be spent. We don't necessarily... I mean, sometimes we do push things an extra year. The squad computers, because they are so expensive. We looked at it last year and said, well, we kind of have a four-year cycle. We said, look, let's push it another year. And we did. We pushed them another year.
These replacements, is this for all and then you're going into a four-year rotation? Or is this just a third?
Are you talking about item number one or item number...
Item number one and two.
Okay, item one... Item number one is a third.
Okay.
We'll continue doing a third, you know, on a four-year cycle. Number two is all of them. So it doesn't really do us any... Well, it's best if they're all replaced at once. Because we really need them to be kind of the exact machine across all the squads. So we're not dealing with that. Because dependability in the squads is, as you can imagine, is important. So again, we pushed it the extra year this year. But we really feel it's time to do it.
For item number two, is there a way to keep our equipment replacement fund funded better? Can we use drug money for that item?
Yeah, the equitable sharing funds in...
Proper terms.
I think the chief would have a better idea. But my understanding is you can't use equitable sharing funds to replace regularly scheduled replacements.
Okay.
It has to be kind of special new uses.
Well, with that... To your point, we're putting together the, I guess, the practice period for body cameras. And body cameras, we can use the equitable sharing funds for. And they, you know, are all kind of connected.
What was that tech review we had done? I forget when it happened. Was that... Like, does that play into some of these decisions?
We're still working on the tech plan. We're going to bring that to you hopefully in May. One of the items that we didn't look at them was not so much equipment maintenance. We did ask them for some best practices. One of the things that we, you know, utilize with regular purchases, like the vehicle maintenance, is that, you know, score sheet of whether or not something needs to be replaced rather than, oh, well, your time's up. And we can certainly do that with our computer equipment as well. If that's something that you're interested in.
I mean, I can see that just speaking from experience. Like a graphics computer wears out faster than someone who's typing.
There's no other questions about the capital. Under professional development, there hasn't been any changes from the previous year. And professional association, there's also no changes from previous year.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Under professional development.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it would be there. Under technical training and materials, for Chris and John?
Yes.
Is that just... Is that several trainings? Is that an ongoing training?
No, well, we do ongoing training. So we do some training subscriptions. But, you know, in order for us to even take a single class, usually there... It could be at least $2,500 per course when we do it. So, you know, we... Unfortunately, you know, technical training is expensive. And that's kind of why it is what it is, so... Yeah, I mean, we do some ongoing and it's a couple of classes for each of us. So overall, the central services budget is up by 7%. Again, that's primarily due to the increase in capital. We're also... We're... Our three-year agreement for our endpoint security software has expired. So we'll be renewing that as well. So unless you have any other questions about any of the line item...
I think we're good, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When are we taking next, Paula? Finance.
One of the things before we jump into finance that a few trustees have brought up to me is there might be some questions that they may have about previous... You know, you can't go through these and then all of a sudden, at the end of the night, have every question that comes into your mind. So as the week goes on and you review what you just reviewed with staff, some questions come up. So by all means, in between these sessions, if anyone has any questions about police or what else did we go through?
Police, PDS, and golf.
Yeah.
I think either Monday or last week, I sent you a memo from the chief regarding some of the questions that you had. So we'll try and do that as well. If you... And that was questions that you expressed tonight. But we try and give you a written response for other questions so that everybody hears the questions and the answers.
We'll go over that later then?
No, if you want to, we can. That's certainly fine if you have a question about the information that Pat sent out about the license plate readers. I was just using that as an example.
Thank you. Yep, you know, we approved cameras in last year's budget, I believe, that the police department requested. I understand it wasn't license plate readers. But Trustee Gunstein at the last meeting, I believe, when we did... When we reviewed police's budget, asked if the license plate readers would deter speeders. And I believe the answer was no. Believe that really wasn't going to make a difference that much.
Chief, I saw you walking the dog earlier.
As far as the license plate readers deterring speeders, I think I explained last time that the city of Chicago is the only city that's authorized in Illinois to use speed cameras. So there are cameras all over the place. And just from what we see on a daily basis with the speeding on Route 20 and Route 59 and some of the other major roadways, there are cameras everywhere, including on top of the traffic light standards that are the sensors for intersections. So I don't think people really pay attention to those as they're driving down the road at 45 or 55 miles an hour. I'm not sure they even see them. I don't believe that license plate readers would be a deterrent to speeders.
So I do have a concern about privacy issues. And I understand that people will say, well, we have cameras everywhere watching you. But this is a chance that we can have it say no to one, any type of surveillance.
What was the cost of those, Chief?
I think they're, if I remember right, $2,500 a camera. Or was it... I'd have to look back at my budget. I don't remember offhand. As far as the privacy issues go, so what the cameras capture is the license plate, the color of the vehicle, the body style of the vehicle, the make of the vehicle, and potentially the model of the vehicle. They do not capture any personal information. Really, when we do a search, we put in, we want to see a white SUV, go through this camera during this specific time. And then it would pull up all that. It doesn't pull up who the vehicle's registered to, who may be in the vehicle, or anything like that. It's just vehicle-specific and license plate-specific.
So when... In regards to the question that I had about other governmental agencies being able to request this information, you responded that different communities handle it differently. Some tell them no, or some allow them complete access. Some tell them that they have to specifically ask you, right, our department, for individual information, which would be your preference because then you would make a decision as to whether you would release that information. Do you ever foresee a time where you would tell a federal agency no?
It depends on what type of investigation it is. So one reason we may want to allow a federal agency to look at the cameras is... A perfect example would be our bank robbery that we had at BMO Harris Bank a few months ago. The FBI is in charge of the investigation. We're not. So if they asked us, hey, could you take a look at this specific type of vehicle or color of vehicle in your cameras or cameras in the area, we could go in and do that. And we could potentially provide them a lead with solving that crime.
I also have privacy concerns. But I think this technology, you know, and the scope that they're using, the data that they're collecting, I think I'm okay with it. And also, I think about my kids. If one of them was abducted and one of these cameras could help solve that crime. And I don't think that, in this context, privacy would be something I'm concerned about with these particular cameras and how they're used. And I think the benefits outweigh the potential privacy concerns. This is my opinion.
Do you currently have access or can you get access to the state camera system if needed?
So the company that we're looking at is Flock. And if we don't join Flock, we could sign an MOU with Flock to view other police departments' cameras that openly share. Or we would have to request permission for them to let us access their data.
Without putting the cameras in themselves?
Without putting the cameras in themselves. But that's only to see other communities' cameras. We would want our own cameras to be able to work on solving our own crimes.
While you have the money, how did you guys derive a seven versus trying it out with like two or three as a beta to see if it's worthwhile? Maybe our town would need more than seven if it did work... Well, you know, was worthwhile. And it wasn't violating privacy concerns?
It may be. What we started taking a look at is strategically placing them where the entrances and exits to the village are. So we would try and place them around the perimeter of the village so that if a crime occurs, we're trying to capture the likely egress routes that someone would leave town and hopefully go through one of those cameras. So we started with seven to see how that goes.
So what kind of crimes would it not be used for? What wouldn't be a good use?
It would be a use to try and solve any crime. Any crime that there's a vehicle associated with, we could potentially use to try and solve that crime. So, we asked about if immigration's and customs enforcement, a federal agency, would have access to the cameras. And FLOC's policy is that they do not allow any access, uh, by ICE to view any of those cameras. And, back to your question, trustee Swansky, that's why I want to be able, or my staff, have my staff be able to vet those requests from other agencies as to be able to give them, decide whether to give them access or not to our data.
The cameras that we approved last year, were, are they up?
Those are case-by-case. Those are pole cameras that we put if there's a specific ongoing crime going on in an area or, um, something like that. So that, we move them around, we don't leave them up all the time.
Okay.
Last question for me. What does it cost monthly or yearly for FLOC? Is it included in this seventeen thousand dollars? And is that for one year?
It's an annual contract per camera.
Per camera? And do we have an amount on that put into this somewhere?
So it's, the seventeen thousand dollars is for seven cameras, so whatever seventeen thousand divided by...
Twenty-five hundred.
I, yeah, I see that, but is that twenty-five hundred per year?
Twenty-five hundred per camera per year.
Per year. So this seventeen thousand would be every year, or more if we added more cameras?
Or less if we decided to reduce them, yeah, exactly.
And that includes the storage? Because all of this data goes into cloud storage, right?
Yes.
So does that twenty-five hundred include that?
It, it does include that.
Along with the actual camera itself?
Yeah, it's for the camera and the storage.
And I don't know why I don't know this, but how many active cases does your detectives have open right now? And if they had access to data like this, how much more efficient could they be at their jobs?
So, occasionally, if we have an idea where an offender might have come from or fled to, there are agencies we know of that have red light cameras, that have LPRs, license plate reader, that we would, we call and say, hey, can you check your cameras and let us know if you see this vehicle come through? And we do that, uh, quite often if we know that there's a vehicle that might have went through one of those intersections or locations that has one of those cameras, and then they do check those for us.
Yeah, I was a little concerned about the privacy too, but I, I appreciate what you're explaining to us, so.
So I, I can tell you, even, um, we had a missing person case, a big missing person over the summer. Um, we were checking all kinds of cameras. We, we requested video from businesses. We requested ring doorbell video. We requested light, uh, red light cameras from Hanover Park, uh, because we thought the person got in a vehicle and left. So there's a lot of those opportunities that we can have, and that's not even a crime. That's just trying to find somebody's family member. So there's a lot of things that we are able to use data for these, uh, these days, and we just work with other agencies. We work with residents, we work with businesses, and this would just be one more tool for us to use to be able to solve some of those things.
Thank you, Chief. Back to finance.
All right, thank you. Let me find my, dear. Thank you. Yeah, so we just heard from, uh, Chris and IT Department. The IT and, uh, the graphic information system, GIS system, technically they're under the finance department, um, and they're, along with our utility billing, uh, the, our accounting, which does payroll, accounts payable, also the main office is part of the finance department. Um, one of our highlights of this last year, we just completed one year with our new accountant that we hired last year. Um, we've been very thankful to have that addition. They've been a, a valuable, um, part as far as, um, checks and balances, segregation of duties. I got to say that, um, in the finance department, we don't always go for efficiency. We sometimes, our, our main goal is to be careful not to, not to lose the money. So that's why we have checks and balances. We have, uh, it's important to do our bank reconciliations in a timely manner and to make sure that we know where, where all the money is. Uh, one of our other highlights is using the new permitting system with the main office. Uh, we've been, uh, using that for a contractor license or also we'll be working, uh, with that system for business license renewals this year. The, uh, the GIS staff, again, they've been, uh, I think you've seen some of their work as far as their mapping, utility mapping recently. They also work on applications that help as far as make the, um, capital budget, the capital improvement plan more interactive, uh, easier to work with, uh, pictures and other things involved. So moving on to the, moving on to the budget, we do not have any, uh, personnel requests. We do not have any retirements, any resignations during the year. We did have a part-time person from water billing move over. They are the new, uh, police department, uh, the chief secretary. So that was one change. We did hire a new part-time to replace, uh, the person that moved over. Other than that though, we have been fortunate and not had a lot of personnel changes. As far as our, uh, training, we are involved with the Illinois Government Officer Finance Association. That's where we do most of our training. We do some local, uh, workshops. We also go to the, uh, state conference, and this year it's scheduled to be in Peoria, so we do get to see some interesting places. And that's basically the association memories, work, um, memberships that we're in. We're in the National Association as well as the local Illinois Association. As far as the line item detail, I think you've, you've been seeing where it shows, uh, the, uh, employee retirement contribution, and it's down this year. Reason why it's down is, that's our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Uh, our contributions are the, the current cost plus the catch-up. Uh, as the stock market and investments did so well last year, our contribution rate went down. That's why our employee contributions is lower. Uh, we're expecting, uh, that to go down again next year since we had such a good year. I don't know about three years in a row though, it's not off to a good start. So the main, we, we are, again, having, uh, we do the ordinance codification, uh, for planning and development, so that has increased a little bit. One of our, our big things again is audit services, and that's our outside auditor. Uh, increases due to, uh, the, the more grant money you get, the more audits that you have done. So single audits, once you're over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, then you're required to do a single audit, which costs more money. We've also had changes in regard to more actuarial services with, um, actuarial reports, um, we like to call it our OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Calculations that need to be part of, uh, each audit. In the finance department, we've also got listed, we talked about, uh, during the, during the budget overview, transferring money from the general fund, uh, into the municipal building fund. That doesn't necessarily mean that it would be used for municipal building improvements, but our municipal building fund is, is very low as far as the balance goes. Um, we, we would like to start building that. Some of the areas that we have used money in the municipal building before, we, we used that to, uh, for the police station. I know that, um, a few million dollars was used, so we didn't have to do bonds for all of the police station. We've used it in the past for, uh, the village hall, uh, to reduce some of the debt service. Uh, but it could be used, uh, for something else. It's not restricted once it goes into the municipal building fund. So that is, that is the highlights of the finance department. Again, there's no new, uh, no personnel changes. Um, the major thing coming out is the municipal building fund transfer. That's why, um, that percentage is so high.
Can you remind me again, where's that two million being transferred in from?
That's from, uh, excess fund balance that is accumulated in the general fund. Part of the reason why the, we try to keep the general fund balance around forty-five, fifty percent, so about six months' worth of expenses in the general fund. It's up, it's up over that. Uh, right now, it's about sixteen million. So we would like to, uh, reduce that general fund into more of, um, uh, the range for our policy and move that money to be used for one-time expenses as opposed to just regular operating expenses. Um, we are proposing to use some of that general fund balance this year, uh, with the operating budget, about a million dollars. So that would bring our, uh, general fund down to about eleven million dollars, our unrestricted balance, um, to, to in the forty, forty-five percent range. Um, so what we would, we would just move it out of an operating fund into more of a capital projects fund to be used for one-time, one-time expenses. Uh, we, we, um, they could be capital projects, expenses, um, something that, uh, I guess more planning or, or discussion needs to be involved in that. It's not going to go there and be spent, but that's something that would need to be discussed.
That's some of the thing, like, um, also unexpected things, like Emerald Ashbore. We used, um, some of that money to, to do that. If you have, you know, something breaks, a boiler goes out, one of those good things. So it's a little bit of a rainy day fund as well, for capital.
We have been fortunate as we have not had any major, I shouldn't say that, but major, you know, I won't say it.
Yeah, it out loud.
But it, it could happen. Any questions in regard to the finance department? Any other questions?
Okay, thanks, Todd.
I'm going to turn now over to a quick, this is Matt Coulter, our assistant finance director, and he's going to be doing a quick overview of the professional services department.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Uh, good evening, mayor and trustees. So as Todd said, I'm going to be presenting the professional services budget, which is part of the general fund. Uh, this is a pretty small budget, so I'm just going to go through each line item real quick. Uh, the first line item is for the actuarial consultants. We have used Foster and Foster as our actuary the past six years, and they produce the yearly police pension actuarial report. Uh, we charge half of the fees for this to the police pension fund, and the other half goes here. So I'm just slightly decreasing the budget, uh, based on current year's activity. Next line item is professional planners. Uh, we are requesting fifty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is no change from last year's budget. This is for the unified development, development code update, which was approved in the budget last year. Uh, the plan was to do this update in two phases. The first phase was going to be done in fiscal year twenty-two, and the second phase in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, Roberta, I know, is working hard on the RFP for this, but we aren't going to incur any expenditures this year. So really, the only change for this is we are going to push this back a year, so now it's going to be done in fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. Now, the next line item is legal services, uh, which is, the name implies, where most legal fees get charged. So village attorney, labor attorney, traffic and housing court, adjudication, and state lobbyist expenditures are what make up this account. Um, I'm not going to get into detail on each of those individual agreements because those are brought to the board, uh, the first, for first board meeting in May. So we aren't expecting any major changes, and based on prior year history, we are budgeting practically, practically the same as last year at three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, the next line item is engineering services. This is where all miscellaneous engineering fees get charged. So any engineering that isn't related to a specific project account gets charged here. This account can be kind of hard to predict, but it just depends on the miscellaneous projects and needs that come up during the year. Uh, but based on past history, this account usually is in the twenty to sixty-thousand-dollar range. So we have been budgeting sixty thousand the past few years. Uh, but this year, we are increasing the budget from sixty thousand to a hundred thousand, and this is for a sewer rate study. I know there's been a lot of discussion on sewer rates, so we did include forty thousand for a sewer rate study in case this is something the board wants to pursue. Uh, the next line item is social services. This was a new line item in last year's bud, last year's budget. Uh, we created this line item for the social work services program through the Northeast to Page Family and Youth Services nonprofit organization. So through this program, the village was assigned a part-time social, social worker who will work twenty hours a, a week mainly for the police department, but she can be also be utilized by village staff if needed. Uh, this contract is a twelve-month term that shall not exceed twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So you can see my current year, uh, estimate just has ten thousand, but this is because the social worker didn't start till November twenty-ninth. So for this budget year, we are expecting to have the part-time social worker for the full year, so the cost should be closer to the twenty-nine thousand. And then the other part of the social, social services line item, and the reason the budget is increasing from thirty thousand to fifty-five thousand, is that we moved the budget for the police psychologist, Dr. Kami Juswin, from the police professional services budget to here. So this is not a new item. The police department has used Dr. Kami's services since two thousand and eleven. Uh, we just felt it made more sense for her services to be charged, uh, to professional services rather than the police professional development line item. We are, however, increasing...
So, so Dr. Kami is less in the budget than the, than the part-time social worker?
Uh, yes, she is. Uh, we are, however, increasing the budget for Dr. Kami from nineteen thousand to twenty-six thousand. Uh, nineteen thousand is what the police department has budgeted for the annual psychologist consultation fees, and that amount is not changing, but due to the police reform bill, it is now mandated, mandated that police officers have mental health screenings done by a third party every year. So that's where the increase in seven thousand comes from. And then the last item is contingencies. Uh, we are keeping the budget at twenty thousand. If you look at prior year history, you can see the budget has been, uh, way, way above this amount, but that is then due to the Spalding Road quiet zone expenditures. And we don't budget for the quiet zone expenditures because we are working off a one-million-dollar grant we received from CN back in two thousand and thirteen. But I believe the Spalding quiet zone is about wrapped up, so I think these, uh, numbers should get back to the normal dollar amount range. And that's it for, for professional services. So it is going up twelve percent and, which is sixty-four thousand dollars, and that is due for, that is due to the sewer rate study and the reclass of the police psychologist.
And the new safety act requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of that is because of this lovely new safety act that they passed.
Okay, no questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
While we make the switch, um, I just wanted to point out that, um, the finance department has received the GFOA certificate of achievement award in financial reporting for, uh, the thirty-ninth year, and the GFOA budget presentation award for the twenty-ninth year. So you're doing a pretty good job of not losing the money, Todd?
Tyler Eishman and myself will, uh, cover the public works budget. I also have John Puglia, sewer supervisor, Mike Warmus, street supervisor, and Blake Grenley, water supervisor, here to help us with any questions you may have. Um, Tyler will get us started with the street maintenance budget.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, mayor and trustees. Uh, appreciate you, um, listening here. So the first thing we have, to go over some of the highlights, um, one thing I brought with, we recently received the... Um, one thing I brought with, we recently received the Tree City Growth Award, which is, I thought it looked pretty nice, so figured. And that award is based off of point system, that includes maintenance, education, and tree planting things. So it's something we're pretty proud of, and we're gonna hopefully continue to get.
Good job.
So I'm not gonna touch on all these, but a few of them. I wanna thank the GIS and police department for helping us create this disaster app that hopefully doesn't get used too often, but it helps when we have, like, icy road conditions or a big storm event where there's a lot of downed trees. I know it's been used for that, and it was very effective and very helpful when it was used.
I just wanted to point out on that app, um, I think we sent out a demo, um, to you when it was, uh, when they finished developing it, and we use it, um, when we had a, a thunderstorm, uh, high wind event. And it really helps us coordinate the efforts of the police department and the public works department so that they can respond to, um, a, a need for barricades or flooded street or a blocked, uh, roadway or sidewalk, um, much faster and much more efficiently than, um, we had in place before. Um, so this is a real, um, great use of our, our GIS, um, our police. Um, we've also included in training, um, the fire department with this app as well, so they have access to it too.
Yeah, and it was a huge help when we did use it, and like I said, hopefully we don't have to use it too much, but at least we know it's there when we need it. And this past fiscal year, we've paved fifteen-hundred feet of bike paths in-house. We're gonna continue to do that, especially as prices continue to increase. And, um, especially during, uh, scheduling issues, dealing with the pandemic and everything else around the globe, we were still able to either increase or remain consistent with our job tasks. We nearly doubled the hours spent removing and replacing concrete. And we keep looking at what we're doing and how we can improve it. And we started doing the sidewalk through driveways in-house to kinda expedite those permits so the homeowners aren't sitting and waiting for our contractors to come in and replace it. And that seems to be getting good feedback, and keep it up. Moving forward. So this was, the only real change here is for the maintenance workers because the street sweeping contract was approved. That will actually go down one. Our main person who did the street sweeping, they will, they are retired now, so we figured that'd be a good time to look at that and see how we can improve or. And then the activity measures that, as I was saying before, our tree trimming hours, for example, have really increased in the past few years and along with our concrete replacement, and the street sweeping miles will probably, yeah, probably close to triple.
With the, with the street sweeper change that you approved tonight, that's one of the things that we've been doing, that when employees retire uh, or, um, separate from us and, and other ways, um, we evaluate their position and determine if there are better way to provide those services. Maybe we shift some duties around to, um, other, um, employees, or, or we look at it and we say, yeah, you know, we do need to replace that person. Um, but the street sweeper, um, uh, contract was a, a good example of looking at, uh, a position, is there a better way to provide that service? And it was a, um, good timing to, um, contract that out.
When it comes to new positions, we are requesting an engineering intern to assist us during the summer. This would be a college student, uh, and it would be split between streets, water, and sewer. Uh, they would help with measuring, construction observation, and could be potential future recruitment. But that would be an intern who would, would help all the different divisions. So it would be split, you'll see it in the other two budgets as well, but it's the same person.
Can you go back up to contractual services again, please?
It's on the overall budget. One page back, Todd.
Summary.
Street maintenance summary.
There you go.
The personnel services, I think, we're wondering why that would end up so high year over year. And then we're also increasing five-hundred-and-some thousand dollars to contractual services. Yeah.
So the personnel services, um, so this was budgeted before we knew of the retirement or if we're gonna do the street sweeping. So that will actually go down with that employee not being here.
So the twenty-five thousand, or two-million-five-seventy-six isn't accurate?
Yeah, that, we left the position in there. The, it'll go down one employee now that we, that you have proved the street sweeping contract. We'll, we'll lower it by one employee, so that number will be revised. As far as the contractual services, we'll get into that in the line item, but, um, maybe we can wait until we get to that part of it and we can kinda explain those lines.
It still doesn't make any sense if it's twenty-four-eighty estimated finish for the year, and then budgeted, we're gonna go up to twenty-five-seventy-six. It looks like there's somebody new added there. Personnel services. Now, the intern's only four thousand dollars, this is almost a hundred. So if it was just one person that was still in the budget, it would be at twenty-four, maybe two or three percent higher than the twenty-four-eighty. Maybe we just may need to.
I was gonna say, it might make, I just ma, ma, make some adjustments on that before we see it again.
We can look at that, yeah.
Are these in the line items, then? Should we just?
Yeah, all of these are in line items, they're more broken down.
Yeah.
So it might make more sense with that. So the street budget did, it seemed like it increased by a large amount, but a lot of that was due to previously approved capital projects that have to move over to the general fund. And one of the bigger things that we're finding out as an effect of the pandemic and now everything else, uh, the lead time to get trucks has greatly increased. Like, for example, on the capital outlay, uh, number one, that is a truck that was replaced, or requested last year and approved, and we probably won't see that for another year. So it's looking like at this point, a two-year lead time to get these trucks. So for an example, any truck that's ordered, let's say, May first of this year, we won't see it until May of twenty-four. So it'll be on the budget until it's actually paid for. Which is.
Does that make sense? We're.
Yeah, technically carry over.
This, this year, we're carrying it over, we just have to re.
Came out of the twenty-one. Technically, we paid for it last.
Already been approved, we just have to re-budget for it because we didn't receive it.
So the money's still there, it's just.
Yeah.
So this current fiscal year, we are requesting two, uh, large dump trucks with a plow and spreader, and these would be stainless steel so they last longer from the salt. You know, this would replace two two-thousand-and-eleven plow trucks, and like I said, we would hope to receive them at this point in twenty-four. And I think that's kind of best-case scenario at this point.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, on the, uh, next page with the vehicle replacement, uh, table, it goes into all that, I, we do have the more detailed sheets available.
Regarding the two dump trucks, your budget in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two was a hundred-and-sixty thousand. What changed on these trucks that are costing them forty, costing us forty thousand dollars more per truck? Other than inflation?
The factor of inflation plus the stainless steel body that we're recommending.
What's that?
Stainless steel body on it now, the, the dump body. It's all stainless now, right?
Yeah.
So that's an added cost, but then just, uh, costs themselves are higher.
So if you're adding a stainless steel chassis to the vehicle, what's the life expectancy over the two-thousand-and-elevens that are ten years old, twelve years old? So this one that was just ordered in twenty-twenty-one, is that going to be, is that stainless steel or is that gonna be the original order?
Say that again?
The one that was ordered in twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, that's stainless steel.
That is stainless?
Yes, it is.
So the cost has gone up?
The cost has gone up, yes.
Twenty thousand dollars per vehicle?
Yes, per vehicle.
So fifteen to eighteen years, you said?
Ye, yes, yes, easy.
Trucks that we, that you wanna replace?
Those are.
I remember this from last year. Um, what, what, what are the miles on these, on those two trucks? The twenty-eleven? I just, I'm not seeing it.
I, I don't know that.
It's not, it's not much of the miles, but.
And these type of trucks, it's not, in my under, understanding, it's not the, the mileage that is on them, it's the rust and the wear and the tear and the safety cautions that we have to take care of. So it's the, it's the salt continually eating the bottom of the body out and the sides of the truck and everything else.
It's haul, it's haul and.
And that's why we kind of developed this, um, this thing. So it's got a category here for mileage, and it rates the mileage and the hours the truck has used. It's got a category for type of service, reliability, maintenance, repair, and condition. And this is a matrix that we brought, we came up with six years ago, I think. Five years ago, something like that?
It's been several years.
And, and basically, it takes into effect, into a, uh, takes into account all of these different things that we all wanna ask about, and it, and it says, this is this number, and it's very, um, specific. So we know that if it hits a certain number, that truck is actually costing us almost more to operate than it is to buy new.
And these are a type of truck that, obviously, when it snows, you don't want it to go down.
Correct.
What's the number out of?
We can send that out, now that, since you haven't sat through that.
Yeah, you guys haven't.
Yes.
I guess just as a reference, we do use, um, a lot of these trucks as trade-ins or we auction them off. Uh, so for the next, the already previously ordered truck, we have trade-ins waiting for that. And just as an example, they've already incurred an additional three thousand in repairs because obviously we have them, we need them, we still use them. But, so these costs for repair and maintenance are gonna continue to go up.
And the trade-in value should probably go up as well considering what's going on currently.
We're hoping that we'll see a good trade-in, that's what we're hearing anyway.
Police in Iowa will take them.
There you go.
Yeah, gravel roads there.
I guess, uh, moving on to number three, this is another one that'll be split among all three divisions. It's an additional skid steer. So right now, there are two, and so usually, depending on what we have planned for the day, this will allow every division to be able to use it, to be able to move heavier items if they're stuck in the yard or something like that. So, um, if there's no questions on this, this is another one you'll see on all three budgets.
How many do we currently have?
Two.
Two, so this will be a third?
Yeah.
So one per division?
Correct. Allow us to get more done and.
For all three divisions are doing so much more work on their own with the concrete, the sewer digs, the water digs, that there's a constant need. We're always trading, okay, who's got it today, who's got the other one? This will allow everybody to each have their own and be able to.
Do we have enough trucks and trailers to transport three, or is that?
Yeah, we would have enough, yeah.
Assuming they were all out and separate.
Right. So then, uh, number four is electric work at the Public Works Garage. Um, this is the same electric from when it was built in eighty-five, so it's not the most efficient anymore, and I'm due for an upgrade.
Is this something you're gonna send out to bid? Or is it?
Yeah.
With respect to the lighting, are you looking to change lighting to, from one particular type to LED? Or has it already been changed?
At the building itself, we've been actually changing, uh, we just changed the, what we call the cold storage to all new LED lights, it's really lit it up, so we've converted them. This is the actual panels that have been pieced together after years, uh, and it's kind of a hodgepodge of panels.
Take a little trip over there, you'll see.
Yeah, we could show you. You guys are electricians, I'd like you to come and take a look at it.
Maybe we shouldn't.
Or maybe not. The price might go up if Adam goes over there.
Little duck people.
Yeah.
All right, we can read these, uh, just not, just in, uh, just give us the highlights of each one of these.
Yep. So, um, the next one is a brush truck, uh, that's used daily, that's replacing the existing one. Uh, that's for tree trimming, everything like that. Uh, asphalt paver trailer, number six. This is, uh, the new trailer would be more safe, 'cause right now it's got a steep drop-off for the paver, um, less big, less harsh on the actual equipment and the person. Uh, need to replace the furnaces at the administration building, and then looking to replace our current front-end loader. Uh, it's twenty years old, and it needs about twenty thousand in maintenance repairs. So it's getting to the point where repairing it is not necessarily worth it. So if there are no other questions, I'll, I'll keep moving. So professional development, there's no changes, no changes to professional association. So on the line items, um, so the regular salaries will actually decrease with the inclusion of the street sweeping. Um, some other ones that basically increase were the services to maintain grounds because of the expansion of the holiday lights with the Marion Bright. Uh, that's gonna continue to increase to help make that bigger and better. Then a bike path sidewalk replacement, its large increase is due to, uh, capital improvement projects that were previously approved. And then tree and landscaping maintenance is due to the Metro project that we're doing in conjunction with Metro.
So what happened, working with the finance department, we took some of those capital projects, moved them into the street line item budget. There's a, the Metro project, um, and then if you look at the Bike Path, um, program, we moved all that money into the street line item, that's why it looks like a large increase, but it's actually. But it's actually capital that we moved under the street division budget.
Right. Like water and sewer have their own capital project, almost line item or fund. And so this kind of takes that into account. And most other things are remaining close to constant. Uh, stormwater facilities is another one due to, uh, capital projects that's increasing. That seems larger than normal. Uh, so that 18% is mostly due to the equipment holdover and the capital project. And that's, uh, unless there's other questions, that's essentially the street budget.
Did we address the questions that we had on contractual services?
That was the capital that got moved over.
Okay, thank you.
Metro project and sidewalk stuff. Bike path.
What else?
Mm, stormwater.
Water. Um, all right, I'll be quick. Um, the water department has been, see with water main breaks and heat checks and everything else. Um, started our first hydrant painting program. You've probably seen a lot of the hydrants that are around the downtown area got painted. We're going to continue that program. Um, it's always good to have nice looking hydrants. Um, we will continue with our water main replacement program. Um, and we are, our water main replacement program will be in a lead area. So it will be our first, um, test to see how the lead replacement goes. We're going to replace services all the way to the meter. So, um, the area that we are looking to replace is from western west, um, Oneida to north. And that loop is there. Um, so we'll see how that goes. Um, as far as, I'll just get into the summary. Um, the only change there is we've had, um, retirement and, um, another senior maintenance where we have two senior maintenance workers. We're proposing to retitle them, basically to water operators, which would require the Class C license, um, which helps us on operating our pump station, the Lake Michigan Pump Station. And the Villa, uh, Lake Street Pump Station requires a Class C. Right now, um, that requirement isn't there. So I'd like to try to get backup, basically have the two, our Blake Grenley, our water supervisor, has a license. But I'd like to have the two water operators have their license. We have three people be able to run the system. Um, there's really no cost change. It's just a title, uh, change. Trying to find those people who are actually advertised right now, trying to find those people. Um, as far as capital outlay, you've already seen those. There's no change in professional development or associations. Um, and then, uh, public works expenditures. It's more a shifting, uh, uh, like materials and supplies. We shifted money from equipment maintenance and materials up to that. So it's a kind of a balancing of where we were actually spending the funds. Um, no net change in overall dollars. Um, and then also that's, is just adjusting based on what the EPA is requiring for testing and that type of stuff. Are there any questions on those? No questions? We will be adjusting the DuPage Water Commission agreement. That did not reflect the increase that we just found out about, so we'll have to make that adjustment. That will revise when we bring it back. Is there any other questions on the water? Move on to sewer. Um, sewer's been busy too. The big thing there, you guys already are aware of, the Bittersweet Treatment Plant is underway. They actually started digging for the first building. And the nitrification towers are removed. Um, I think they have a little bit of concrete still to remove, but it's starting to look like construction projects, so, um, that'll be moving along. Um, one of the big things this past year, uh, the board increased the percent, uh, 85% village, 15% homeowner cost for lining the surface. We did have an increase up to 30. Um, and we're going to continue that this year. We actually just had a meeting today to find out where we're going to be doing those. Uh, I, I imagine that number will continue to grow, which is good. Um, so we'll continue that going. Um, as far as our Herrick House lift station is currently out the bid. That's the one that's on West Bartlett over by Maryville. We're going to see how bids come back. Hopefully they come in within budget. Um, and we would be bringing that back to you next month. Uh, as far as the sewer summary, there is no changes in personnel. Um, there's really no changes, um, in really anything, uh, personnel-wise, capital outlay-wise. The only thing, this is another carryover. This was a, the generator was approved last year. But again, the lead times to get it, we won't get it until next fiscal year, so we have it listed once again. Um, the only change on professional development is the first item, which is a wastewater short school. It's training to be able to get our guys, um, our maintenance workers basically to get their licenses for wastewater operating. Um, and get a higher license. So it'll, they go to a class, they take the test, hopefully they, uh, have their license, um, to operate the plant.
How long is that class?
It's a week long.
Holy cow.
Um.
And you get to go to Rockford. Wow.
Yeah, Rockford and Edwardsville. Lighting stuff.
Looks like you're going to be eating good at least.
Actually.
That's even better than Peoria. Um, professional associations is the same. Um, as far as expenditures, um, we had an increase in our sludge removal. That continues to grow. Um, a lot of that is due to our loading from our industrial park, uh, in the food industry. They send us solids, so we end up filtering them through and have to deal with them. Um, Brewster Creek, uh, also creates odors, so we've been dealing with that for several years. I think we finally, uh, found a solution that, um, has gotten to a point where the residents are not calling. But it costs money. It's a chemical feed. Um, we're still trying to work with our industrial cus, uh, uh, members there to try to get it at the point source so that they can treat it.
Industrial pain?
Yeah, you could call it that.
Their food industry pain?
But, uh, it's good. I mean, they're, they're doing good business, but it has a side effect. So we're just dealing with that, so. There really is.
Speaking of that, Dan, has there been any complaints about smells recently? I have not heard anything about that.
We've gotten some recently at Stern's by Home Depot. So we're trying to track down that. Um, it's coming from, because it, there's a, a lift station in Brewster Creek that pumps down to Stern's and Home Depot. Then it goes to the lift station south of Home Depot. So it's all along that path. Um, so we've been trying to track that down to see if there's another solution there. But that's more of when people are driving by, they smell it. I've smelled it. Um, the people on Washington is where we were having a lot of complaints. Those people, knock on wood, um, we have not heard from and they were vocal, so they would have let me know.
We've required, uh, industrial people that were blowing over the limits to control it somewhat, I'm, I'm, I'm told, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
We're still working with a couple of them, um, but yeah, that, that.
Will be into eternity.
Yes. That's all I got for sewer. Unless you have any questions.
Um, just as a sidebar, I think one of the trustees brought it up today, um, which I think would be a great point, is to team up with some of our fabulous PR people and shoot some stuff out and virtually and maybe even, um, stuff in the village letter about what's going on and the costs that are going to be increasing. Just some really neat way, kind of like the police department does, to get the message out that, hey, this is coming and these reasons.
Yeah, I know, um, Gabby often joins us, um, but I'll make sure that she gets that information. Um, it won't make the May-June Bart letter, um, because you won't approve those increases until after. Um, but we'll definitely have a big spread in June. And then we'll, we can do the social media after your approval. We'll do that faster.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you start that up again. Coffee with the mayor. Coffee with the trustees every Saturday morning at seven.
Yeah, right.
Let's make it six.
All right, administration, you got three minutes.
I will, uh, try to make it quick here. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Board, uh, for allowing me to present the administration budgets tonight. Please feel free to ask me.
We can't hear you very well, Sam.
Oh, sorry. Uh, please feel free to ask me a question throughout, um, the presentation here. Um, so I'll kind of hit on some of this as I'm going. Uh, in the spring of 2021, uh, staff worked with our Park District in Jewel, Osco. So it was a vaccine event in response to our COVID pandemic. Uh, it really was a team effort though and involved systems, um, from our townships as well as our counties um, to kind of reach the seniors in that first wave of registration. As well as our fire department head staff there in our library district. Um, over 3,000 people were vaccinated at that two-day event. And, uh, later on Jewel did note that, um, our event was the most efficient event that they had hosted at the time. So we're very proud of that. Um, while continuing to see, uh, strong business investment in the village, uh, from our downtown all the way to our major thoroughfares. Um, a car dealership's coming to the north end of Bartlett. And, uh, the air and board supported a Class 7C for their project, which, uh, really helped incentivize them to come to Bartlett. Um, there are also several projects, sorry, in the hopper, uh, for our business parks, uh, west. Um, we're continuing, um, to, uh, work with business prospects on the corner of Route 59 and West Bartlett as well. Um, in 2022, the Bartlett History Museum will be moving the, uh, current exhibit in the train station, which is, um, more of a, uh, COVID-friendly exhibit looking through the windows. And it's, uh, moving to, uh, a new, shifting gears to a new exhibit called I'll Drink To That, uh, from temperance and tolerance to Bartlett's libation, uh, tree, uh, which will have, uh, programs in the train museum as well as in Village Home. Um, throughout the pandemic, the village, uh, has continued to be an informational resource, uh, for our residents and businesses via Facebook, um, our website, our business e-blast. Um, and to add on to that, staff is looking to create a, um, electronic newsletter as well to add to our communication mix, to kind of mix in, um, between, you know, a simple Facebook blurb and the, the bi-monthly, uh, Bart letter. Um, Economic Development Commission and staff has also began, um, discussions around developing a community branding, uh, plan for the, the village and kind of moving away from that never far away slogan. Um, a new community branding, uh, program with, uh, our brand, um, would get the village kind of a reset on our communications and, um, allow us to really show us our, our strengths for, to attract new residents and businesses and, um, also keep the, the Bartlett businesses in town. Um, staff has directed, um, was directed to enhance our holiday events. And with the help of the Bartlett Park District, the library district, the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary and the Lions Club, uh, we created the Marion Bright branding this year. Uh, Marion Bright included a beefed-up tree lighting, um, as well as, uh, two new events. The first was a holiday decorating contest for our business and residents. And, uh, the second was a Coco Crawl event. Um, the Coco Crawl event saw 25 businesses sign to participate. And, uh, it really helped, you know, feed in their doors, um, during the holiday season. Uh, moving on to page six of the narrative, uh, our business e-blasts, which, uh, during the height of COVID, were used substantially to get information out to our business community, are now shifting back to more, um, of that broker and developer database and kind of setting more of our highlights of vacant buildings and vacant land sites. Um, on page eight, the changes to our business license, uh, code and the renewal process, um, will help us streamline the new license, licenses and renewals. Uh, this will cut down on our staff time and, uh, move all of our applications, uh, for business licenses and renewals online, uh, providing our, our businesses with a, a simpler process as well. And those, um, renewals will be going out at the end of this month. Um, moving on, looking at some of the highlights, uh, the streets of Bartlett was renovated and is now, uh, 100% capacity. Um, additionally, the village received its first tranche of, um, disbursements for the ARPA, uh, funding. And, uh, the second payment is expected this next fiscal year. So looking at the numbers portion, um, we have no personnel requests or capital outlay. Um, professional development, uh, includes the typical conferences, uh, many of which were, were virtual last year. Uh, professional associations also, um, stay the same as were all existing. In terms of government expenditures, um, we are seeing a, a 3% overall increase. Um, we'll see a, a 10% increase to the advertising line item. And that is for that, um, community branding portion that I discussed earlier. Um, additionally, you'll see that the past two years, those, at the actual expenditures are, um, have been lower. But we haven't been to, uh, going to as many in-person conferences and trade shows. Um, and we do plan to do, uh, more, uh, marketing this next fiscal year as well. Um, the 50% decrease in professional development you see, that comes from the off-year of the strategic plan. Um, and then flipping to the next page.
Well, Sam, just real quick, um, one of the things that we, um, considered, you know, this being the off-year of strategic planning, was to, and I want to get your feedback on it, is to have, um, a workshop that goes in more detail into some of our capital planning and our asset management program. If you have some interest in that, we can certainly, um, swap out strategic planning and, and go a little bit of a deeper dive than what we do on Tuesday night, if that is of interest to you.
I agree with that.
Right, then we can, we can also sort that out. Go ahead, Sam.
I think we should have it in Florida. I guess Bartlett Hills will do.
We're approving the budget. We could do that.
Um, that 5% increase there to, uh, economic incentives is, um, you'll see on the next page, the Culver Sales Tax rebate for this year. Um, skipping down to the Civic Group funding, um, Arts in Bartlett and Heritage Days teamed up this year for their request. Um, Arts in Bartlett is looking, uh, they're requesting $5,000. Um, and they're going to be going back to their Weekend Global Arts Festival that they had done, uh, in previous years before the pandemic. Um, Heritage Days is requesting $2,650. Um, that would go towards insurance signage, um, a hayride and some kind of, uh, beefed-up stuff for their Halloween Fun Fest and their, uh, pet event. Um, additionally, the Chamber is requesting, um, $5,500, which is up from $3,500, uh, the previous fiscal year in support of Chamber initiatives and recovery efforts in response to the pandemic. Uh, just above Civic Group funding, uh, we have two new items. Uh, the first is $12,000, uh, to go towards a community survey. This would be used for the community input portion of the strategic plan and, uh, give board and staff really valuable information going into the next session of the strategic plan.
Yeah, we'd want to review that before it gets sent out. Yeah.
Uh, and the second item there, uh, it would go towards the, uh, the board's goal of enhancing community events. Um, of this $10,000, we have received, uh, additional grants for further enhancements of Marion Bright, like, um, perhaps, uh, an additional horse team, music, lighting, uh, et cetera. Uh, the village also received a letter, um, from Civic. Uh, the village also received a letter, um, from civic groups, planning a potential Oktoberfest. Um, staff did anticipate a request for Marion Bright, some sort of fall event, uh, so we had a ten thousand there, just kinda to give the board some latitude and as a placeholder. Um, so I'll be happy to take any questions.
What groups are behind that, um, Oktoberfest?
It's the Chamber...
Lions.
The Chamber, the Rotary Club and the Lions Club.
Right.
Yeah, Lions Club, right. Rotary and Chamber.
As Sam suggested, um, there, between Marion Bright enhancements that have been requested, as well as the letter that you received, uh, the other day from the civic groups, there is, uh, ten thousand dollars that we put in there to give the board latitude, should they wanna make those enhancements to Marion Bright and/or fund, uh, the potential Oktoberfest event.
That's it?
That is it.
That's all you got? Um, one quirky number that I was looking at whenever you did this earlier, is on the administration summary, other charges. Did I miss that? Did you already go through that? The balance from a hundred and eighty-six thousand up to two-hundred-and-twenty?
What page is that?
It's twelve. It's line item under the budget, uh, number, like, the fourth line down, other charges. Think that's what swapped between departments, but I don't know why it would increase so much. Village Board, Village Board Administration Summary.
Those numbers flow from the line item detail?
Mm-hmm.
And so, down here on, on, uh, your, so the total should be four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand? If you look at the line item detail, the page that, that I'm showing... The four-hundred-and-twenty-three is made up of economic incentives, two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, five-hundred is the bulk of it?
Where was that from? So I don't see where you're at, Todd.
Page one.
Oh, there we go, okay. Economic incentives, alright, so that, that hasn't changed a whole lot.
Yeah, so the, the, the summary shows the estimated as opposed, and opposed to what, what's being requested, and when we show on our line item, we're showing what was budgeted last year, what was budgeted this year. The reason why it was so low, the estimated is so low, that's, that's the beta in, uh, the admin department, so if we didn't use the beta, it, it was, the actual amount is low.
Okay.
So we're, we, we budget...
Uh, uh, all I'm asking is it's not an increase that much in expense, just it looks like it is on the summary.
Yeah, just on your, where you're showing what was estimated to what's budgeted, yeah, the big difference is we didn't use as much beta. You see the prior year was three thousand?
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that, that summary, i-if you wanna see what made up that summary, it's, it's the different sections on the line item detail show what makes up that on that...
It's a geeky spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So in, in twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, under economic incentives, that's beta, right?
Yes. Basically, it's beta, there's some sales tax incentive there, but mostly beta.
Because we, then we budgeted for two-hundred-and-fifty-five versus thirty-three?
No, the thirty-three is what we're estimating to be the actual. We budgeted two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand last year, and we're only gonna be used, we're gonna use less than thirty, just because some of the timing, we approved the beta, and then, if it's not paid out, then we don't expense it until it's actually been paid out, even though it could've been approved during this year. I think we've got some betas that are hanging out there right now, they haven't fulfilled their obligation and, and received payment for that yet. Probably not. And that's, um, those are the, that's the program that's being supported by the, uh, by the video game.
Yep. Thanks for explaining that.
Any other questions? I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Um...
Need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I'm not ready, I'm not ready, I'm not ready yet. Stalling for someone. Um, alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Danny, second by trustee Hopkins, so we're quick, please call the roll, slowly.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Rinkie?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Wake up out there, you know.